Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming to the December 19 Avon Town Council Meeting. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robert Pope.
President.
Jason Puckett.
President.
Dawn Loudon.
President.
Bill Holland. Greg Zuzen.
President.
On behalf of quorum, first item on the agenda is the Avon Police Department Awards. Chief Stoops.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity just to hand out some awards here real quick tonight from some thank you awards for a National Night Out event that all of you are somewhat aware of and been there and helped out with. My helper can't be up here right now because his legs won't let him, so I'm gonna have to walk back and forth and kind of do this. A few of the people are here that are top donors for the event. We want to recognize them and thank them for all of their support. We also have a couple, maybe staff awards to give out as well, so I'll just go ahead and get started. I think we have a representative from Zaxby's here, so we'll go ahead and call him up. There were one of our top five donors. What's your name, sir?
Dakota.
Dakota. Thank you. And you want to come on over here? I think they want to take a picture or get you on the camera.
Yeah, just like we want him on the street.
Thank you for all your support and everything that you've provided to us for that event. This is a good deal to value.
We hope to continue in 2025.
We hope you can too.
All right.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to call up C.T. Bowman from the Prestwood Country Club. They were one of our, one of our top donors for the event. We really appreciate that. Interesting fact, Mr. Bowman is retired Marion County Sheriff's Deputy, and he's gonna be applying with our department. I talked to him earlier. He's only 78 years young, so he's still a lot of fight left.
If they should know about the Phillies.
Thank you, sir, for all your support. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Our Marcus Pizza representative show up. Special thanks to Domino's because throughout the year, not only do they help with National Night Out, but they often, they'll send over pizzas and stuff like that, so we really appreciate that. Maybe more than National Night Out. And we have a Buboes33 representative. All right. I don't think I've had a chance to meet.
We make all this restaurant. People come straight from work.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Pull it over here so she can grab the picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to make this as brief as we can, but I certainly want to echo the chief's appreciation for giving us the opportunity to do this. We first did our first night out against crime in 2015, and to say we were a little nervous about what it was gonna start to look like and what it's become has been quite an endeavor, but I want Julie to come up here for just a minute. She doesn't know this is why she just gave a really weird looking face, so if you can come over here, that would be great. So, yes, absolutely. So Julie, if you come over here and face that way, because you're supposed to. So Julie is one of a handful of committee members that we had. In the first several years that we organized this event, it was just super stressful on us. For a smaller department, sometimes we kind of have a little bit of a mistaken identity from the public when they see some of the magnitudes of events that take place. And there's so many people in our community that help us with the donations and the sponsorships, but there's two individuals that are here tonight that we want to recognize as well for being a part of our committee and just really making those efforts every day to help us. And we give Julie a hard time about a lot of things, but she's very passionate about this community. And every time that we've had a sort of an incident where we're trying to get money raised, always talking to Julie, she helps us get so many things scheduled in the background, the tents that we use, making sure that the donations are actually deposited in the right locations for us is super important when we start to accept those revenue lines and making sure that we're squared away for our event. So we just made some smaller awards for everybody that's on our committee, and Julie is one of our committee members, so just wanted to present this to you real quick, something that's easy enough to put on your desk. You don't feel like you have to, you know, work around it or drop it too bad. So this is for you, and just publicly with everybody here, thank you for what you've done for us. It is so nice to have a group of people, including yourself, that chip in on all the planning. It stresses me out, and all my guys at the PD know it. And so over the years, kind of letting go some of that and having a committee that's put together that supports what we do, and our having a committee that actually sees that front and center is so important to us. So thank you very much, Julie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so the other one that we have is for Gary himself. So a couple of years ago, Gary actually came to us. He and his wife just came in and said, "Look, we're a big part of this community. We want to be an advocate. We want to help." And so Gary goes out every year and knocks on the doors. He has the relationships, the friendships, and that is so key in so many things that what we do is to get people to just believe into what the program is. And people that donate their time is one thing, people that donate their money is another, but Gary and his wife, Bev, have been such a tremendous asset for not only our program, for our department as a whole. And so when Gary found out we had a committee, he starts knocking on the door. We're like, "Hey, come on in. Let's get things set up and let's get rolling." But I just can't thank you and Bev enough for everything you've done for us. It really truly does mean so much to us to have people that genuinely, genuinely support what our mission is and being able to support those individuals in any way we can. It's such a small token, but I always hope everybody understands what you guys mean to our community and what you do for this council and just means so much to me. So we want to thank you with the same award.
It really goes beyond just going door to door and soliciting the money, too. Gary has been there and then every year bringing lunch for all the volunteers and everybody that works. And it's not just like some, you know, cheap lunch. He goes out and he gets like the best wings, turds, paper plates, Ziploc bags for leftovers, all the condiments, everything. And we really, really do appreciate that because when you're out there putting all that together, you don't have time to stop and eat sometimes, and it makes it nice to be able to slow down.
Like I've told you, it can never be enough.
Well, we really appreciate it. No kidding.
Thank you guys very much. And this is kind of a good circumstance here. I saw Dr. Wyndham's here for the event tonight, too, and we also have recognition for the schools and what they've done in facilitating support on so many different levels. And so when the time is right, we can get everybody from the schools and they know what's happening, we'll let them know to do that. But the schools have been a tremendous partner for us as well in everything that they do, their facilities. The terminology that was shared with me was that the school said whatever Avon PD needs for that event, and that was the marching orders, and that really meant a lot to us. And so we do have several other people that were on the committee, some of the department heads that are not here tonight. We will work on reaching out to them kind of individually and giving them their awards, but thank you guys so much for supporting what we do. It's just such a really awesome thing to sit back and watch thousands of people show up, thousands of people leave, and just understanding how many different networks have to cross in order for that night to be so fun. So thank you guys very much for what you do. That's all.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are a number of items on there, so does anybody have any comments or questions regarding those? If there are now, would somebody like to make a motion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda to include the check register for today. The, let's see, the executive session for December 5th meeting minutes, the December, the December 5th joint executive session meeting minutes, the approval of our minutes from our December 5th meeting, risk management annual report, our internal control annual report, ADA and Title VI annual report, our town manager contract. I'm making sure I'm getting everything. CCMG mandatory reimbursement to end dot all as presented.
We have a second. Row call, please.
Dawn Loudon. Robert Pope.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or any specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. With nobody coming forward, we'll move on to council comment and liaison reports. Ms. Loudon.
Well, I attended the steering committee meeting number four for the new comp plan that we're going through or working through. That meeting was specifically about future land use and how we're gonna divide up the areas for future, like redevelopment type areas. The next meeting will be January 14th. It's a steering committee meeting again, and it's just gonna review focus areas. We kind of picked out different focus areas within the town and within the township, actually. And then after that meeting, I went over to the Ann Engelhardt retirement celebration, which was right before the school board meeting that night, and I believe she had 16 and a half years in of sitting on the school board, so they honored her that evening. That's it for me.
Jason?
I don't have anything new tonight.
Robert?
I got nothing.
Well, I had a couple of things here. Dawn and I met on the 9th with a group looking to put in some attainable housing, 250 units on Ronald Reagan 100 South. That area has been designated as a tax credit area, so we'll probably have a conversation about that in our next work session. As well as Dawn, I attended Ann Engelhardt's retirement, as well as then read the proclamation about the Avon Marching Black and Gold to the school board and those in attendance. Also attended the steering committee meeting. Also met Brian and myself, met with loss of Avon Avenue of Family Promise and School Corporation about donating some additional land. There's two more houses that are there that they're looking to acquire. And then we have the plant commission on the 16th, so busy schedule. Next item on the agenda is zoning introductions. Whispering Pines South. Linda, are you gonna do that, or?
I can do it. District representative.
Okay.
Good evening and happy holidays. I am Melissa Gerard from Polte, and I'm here to introduce sort of a novel application for Whispering Pines South. I want to give you a little history. I'm here with Polte Homes, and I have Dave Compton from Polte Homes here as well, and Dr. Wyndham from the Avon Community School Corporation, who actually owns this property currently. We have been in, Polte has under control some, about 78 acres west of the high school. We have been in discussions with the high school or with the school corporation for probably about a year. It's been most of my time at Polte about what we do with that. Do they want that? It finally kind of developed a few months ago, several months ago, that they wanted to swap us to properties that they own, which comprise about 80 acres in total, for the 78 acres on Grundy. So we, the school corporation just approved that contract on the 9th of December. That would be property north of the Sycamore School and then this Whispering Pines property. And I'll show you. I'm sure you all know where this one is. They, plus there's a little cash in the contract as well, but anyway, so these properties have got to go through the plant commission for various processes. Aspen Trace was already zoned appropriately for what we wanted to do with it. That's the Sycamore property, and the plant commission just approved the plat for that this week. This property, Whispering Pines, has a little bit more complicated history. So, oh, we've also met with, and I wanted to let you know this, we've met with both the Forest Commons HOA and the existing Whispering Pines HOA management, plus the school corporation has organized a series of meetings for us. So we've had some open meetings with residents in the area who are interested in the development. The status of Whispering Pines and our relationship to the existing HOA is still being discussed. I don't know that we'll have, you know, whether we'll use their pool, whether we'll use their common areas, how we'll contribute to them, whether we'll be one HOA or we'll be two separate A's that are affiliated by contract. We don't know all those answers yet, and we're still working them out. At a minimum, we fully intend to help them, and it's totally up to them. I mean, we don't care. So whatever they want, if they want us in, if they don't want us in, we'll make it work. At a minimum, however, we've told them that we're going to contribute toward the entrance maintenance because people are entering there as well for our subdivision. So Whispering Pines was originally zoned in the county in 2003. This was the site plan that was attached to the zoning file that I found in the county records. In connection with the zoning, at the county level, there were commitments made, which are now 25, 23 years old, 24 years old, and so are a little bit dated. At least one secondary plat was filed through the county. The records aren't real great. They think they've sent some stuff here. We don't necessarily know. I mean, it's been 20 years. And then sometime after that first plat, it was annexed by the town of Avon. The original builder was supposed to be MI, and there are references in the commitments to their floor plans, which are also now 20 years old, 22 years old. But MI actually never developed this property, never closed it. It ended up being Estridge for the northernmost sections, and then nobody was ever really able to develop the southern section. And so it was sold to the school corporation. The town can't find the entire plat file, but we only have this rezoning map. So I want to talk about some of the changes. You'll see the existing Whispering Pines amenity area there, and I've outlined and read what is left that the school corporation owns right now. It doesn't perfectly correspond to what was intended to be the southern section of Whispering Pines, but I can highlight that for you later. One thing I did want to highlight is the entrance down at the south there. You will notice that the existing Whispering Pines sections only have one entrance to their subdivision. It is a boulevard entrance, but it's only one entrance off the roundabout. The secondary entrance for the subdivision was always intended to be that southernmost entrance per the concept plan, but when that property didn't develop, they never got a secondary entrance. I'm not gonna spend too much time on the zoning, but I do know that there were some questions raised at your meeting before Thanksgiving about my errors in asserting in the zonings for these properties, and I wanted you to understand how that came about. This was the map of the zoning that was on Beacon as of the time I filed the rezoning application in this, in this application. As you can see, most of the areas zoned R2, including it showing Timber Bend is zoned R2. Linda discovered after I filed that this is not the correct zoning map and removed it from Beacon, but at the time I was looking at things on Beacon, this was the map I was looking at. This is the correct map per Linda and what she was able to find out going through the files. The property is still zoned R1, and part of Whispering Pines is zoned R2, but Timber Bend is R1. But we are still adjacent to existing Whispering Pines, which is R1. And then that's side by side comparison. This is our current site plan. Couple of things I wanted to highlight for you. The property, at the time it was approved by the county, the drainage calculations were prepared such that the Whispering Pines pond would accept all the flow from this property as well, and this was always factored into the drainage calculations. I told Banning, I said, "Uh, it's been 20 years. Drainage standards have changed, so let's make our site independently meet the more stringent Avon requirements of 2024 instead of 2003 county standards." So we had to take up a little acreage and create our own detention onsite. Also, the first design I filed didn't show that access on 625. Tac said, "We want that access there," and I pushed back a little bit. I'm like, "I have two entrances at the top," and at the time I said, I said, "You know, you have other ways to get in and out of that other than that roundabout." And they looked at me and they said, "No, we don't. That's the only access for that subdivision." And I immediately backed down and said, "Okay, you need a secondary access." I mean, I think it's a safety benefit for all of Whispering Pines to have that secondary access there as well. We have, we're matching the existing entrances up there at the north. And then the tan lots are larger lots along the southern perimeter. They don't adjoin Timber Bend. There's, there's common area, and then there's a separate land parcel owned by the vapors, and then there's Timber Bend. But it's in recognition of the fact that the Timber Bend lots are a little bit bigger, so we would make ours a little bit bigger. The plan has about 11% independent open space. Originally, the plan relied on the amenity center for Whispering Pines, but that 11% is independently on a self-contained basis met on this parcel. This slide highlights for you a little bit of what the differences are between the old plan that was approved in the county and where we are today. So the green parcels were part of the original county plan, but they are no longer part of what the school corporation owns or that we're developing. The green on the north is now deeded to the Whispering Pines HOA, and it's part of the amenity center. The green part to the west has been deeded to the vapors, and they now own that. Everything that's in yellow was part of the original plan, but it was part of lots, and we're now putting it in common area. So all of that yellow area is, is gonna be common area on our plan. It was part of the lots originally. These are the models that we propose to build. We have one ranch model that's about 2,300 square feet, and then we have about seven, eight, maybe more, two-story models ranging from about 2,400 square feet, a little more, to 3,300 square feet, and those are base square footage elevations, so with options, it will likely be more than that on all of I prepared this chart to highlight for you to, there's a lot of stuff in the commitment modifications, a lot of red that looks very scary, but it's actually not very scary. Most of it, the changes are just for stuff that no longer apply, like having an individual mailbox per house. Well, I'll do that if I can, but the US Postmaster now tends to prefer the gang mailboxes, so I may not technically be able to comply with that commitment. We don't use Masonite anymore. I changed that to Hardy Plank. The plans that were referenced were not attached, and... The plans that were referenced were not attached and they've been through two builders and were 20 years old. One interesting thing about these written commitments is that I cannot find for the life of me that were, they were ever recorded. They do not appear in our title commitment. I did an independent Doc Pop search to see if I could find them. I can't find them. The only reason we know that they're there is because we're using the same engineers. And they didn't even have a signed copy in their file. I went to the county offices, I found a signed copy, but it's not signed in a way that could have even been recorded. It's not notarized and there's no legal description. So suffice it to say, I'm not even sure that these are applicable, but I am here in good faith telling you, asking for modifications in the event that they are applicable. So the original Whispering Pines had a limitation on the number of lots that could be in the subdivision, in this part of the subdivision of 64. We're asking for 71. On the lot widths, I have adjacent to Timber Bend there. It's not really adjacent to Timber Bend, but just on the south. The written commitments provided for 120-foot minimum width. We're asking for 100, which is still in excess of your R1 standard, which is what the property is currently zoned today. The original Timber Bend commitments required 18,000 square foot lots on the south lots. And we're asking for 15,000 square feet, which is the same as the R1 standards would currently require today. All other lots in the subdivision, the written commitments required 100 feet. Your R1 zoning, we require 90. This is the reason why we're asking for a rezoning to R2 is for 80-foot lots. The existing Whispering Pines sections, I think, are between 80 and 85 feet for most of the ones that are already built. So this is not out of character with what has been done in that neighborhood. And then one of the things that I think is a benefit here is the square footage requirements. We are actually increasing that. The minimum square footage in the written commitments that were given to the county was 1,900 square feet. We are proposing to increase that to 2,300 square feet for the one-story and from 2,200 to 2,400 for a two-story. So we're proposing to build a bigger house, albeit on a somewhat smaller lot, although these are still fairly large lots by today's standards. The other thing for, the one other, oops, sorry. One other item in the written commitments that I'm going to be asking for relief from is the written commitments require a first-floor brick wrap all the way around the house on four sides, on the south and the east lots. The ones on 625 and the ones on the south that will be visible from Timber Bend. Nobody really builds full, first-floor brick wraps anymore. It, it, it isn't what today's homebuyers want. It isn't the style. I actually took this picture. This, this is not Polte, this is not a Polte subdivision, but this is one of the most expensive subdivisions I know and I drive by it every day, at least once, sometimes twice. And I wanted you to see the rears. These people could afford whatever they want to put on those houses. And there is not a single first-floor brick wrap on any of those houses. It's just like kind of stucco. We don't do it anymore because it's not the style. The other thing, this isn't really a lot of relief that I'm asking for here on these commitments. Just a little bit of modification language and some recognition of what this commitment meant when it was given. So the existing written commitment requires that, an effort to maintain or preserve the trees along the property lines. When we rerecord these commitments with our new legal description, it will not be the entire original property line. The only place along the original property line that really is now our property line is along the east and the south. There's a little teeny notch up in the corner, but it's part of a lot that I don't think we'll get into very much anyway. But I would like to have some reference in the commitments that we rerecord that we're going to preserve, try and preserve the trees along our south and east property lines, which is effectively what the current commitment means. It's just, it will get confusing if I don't add this language when we rerecord it with a smaller legal description. In my, I have, we've done a comparables analysis on sales prices. And these are sales within one mile within the last 12 months around Whispering Pines. And we've got comps, average sales price of 459 on an unweighted basis and then 408 on a weighted basis. We are estimating that our purchase prices or our average sales price will be between 495 and 525 with a range between 475 and $600,000 plus. So obviously substantial and in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So that said, I'm happy to address any comments, questions you might have or if you have homework for me, I'll attempt to get on that.
Well, you've certainly given us a lot of information that we're going to have to sit down and talk about and look at. So unless anybody else has any comments they want to make, we'll show for the record that this zoning introduction.
I've got one question, clarification. I'm not sure what slide this is, this one?
Yes.
It says lots depicted on Exhibit B with a blue dot.
Yes.
One I don't find Exhibit B, nor do I find anything that's got blue dots on it.
Yeah, because I cut and pasted that from, actually, I should have presented this to you and I'm sorry about that. So Exhibit B was attached to the written commitments that I have in the plan commission file. I didn't snip and paste it in here, but I've actually added some lots to this as well, if you can see this. The original commitments applied to the west and the south. I've added these up here along the north too, to ones that would have the full main Scott wrap all the way around because those would be visible from the entrance too. So I've taken all the existing lots that would be subject to the first-floor wrap, albeit now I'm proposing a 30 and 20 Scott. And then I've added these two as well on the north.
From the diagram that you did provide us, am I correct in understanding that would be Lot 1 through 12 on the east, Lot 13 through, it looks like 22 on the south, and then Lot 58 and 71, it's really small.
Yeah, I can't read it.
The very north side.
Yeah, the two between the drive, the, the entrance boulevards.
All of them along 625 East, all of them along Timber Bend. And then the, the two additional that would be abutting the, the boulevard entrance.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just counting the one, is it, because it's adjacent to 625, but, but yeah.
Well, I flunked my optometry test here, can't read it, so.
I should have been able to pass. I've had the cataract surgery, but I just can't see it, it's so small.
Any other questions or comments? And for the minutes, let's show that ZA 2411 Whispering Pine South has been introduced. Let's move on to Family Promise South, ZA 2412, Family Promise Phase 2.
Good evening, Steve Brehab with Banning Engineering. And I brought this lady with me too, Julie Randall with Family Promise. And I'd like her just to do a little brief introduction on who Family Promise is and, and what they do and how they're involved in the community.
Hi, good evening. Thank you guys again for having us to talk about a new project in Avon. Really appreciate the opportunity to present this tonight. Steve's going to go into all those details, but I, just a real quick overview. I know you all are pretty familiar with Family Promise, but our work in the, in the community continues. This year, we'll have ended homelessness for over 100 families that live in our community. We'll have prevented it for over 1,000 families. So those are families that were about to lose their homes, that we stepped in and provided stability service and rent assistance so they're able to keep their homes. And those 100 families that we ended their homelessness, some of them lived in our shelter in Plainfield. Others lived in our transitional housing in Plainfield. Some lived in our homeless shelter that's for individuals in, in Plainfield as well. Some live in tents right here in Avon. Some are seniors at the academy in Avon who have no parents and come and live with us in our shelter with their children or with, usually they only have one child when they're still in high school. And so, you know, we're a valuable part of this community and we're grateful to be able to serve the most vulnerable people. And we're proud of the work that we're able to do. As we look forward to 25, you know, we know the solution to all these struggles. The solution, the solution to homelessness really is a home. We can do all the other things. We can work on childcare and transportation and, and all the things that we know help people. But at the end of the day, if a, a home is not affordable, they're never going to be able to make it. And so we'll continue in 25, working to create more affordable housing throughout Henricks County. This summer, we opened Skanel Lane. If you haven't seen it, it's at the corner of Township Line Road and 267 in Plainfield. And we have 12 duplexes there that are all affordable housing that just opened in August. They were full on day one. We have another project that we're building in Plainfield called Winding Way and it's 30 permanent supportive housing units. It's right across from the new, what's the place called? Hob Station, right across from Hob Station, we have 30 townhomes that are being built. And then of course, the project that we're going to share tonight is a phase two of one that we've already talked about before. So again, thank you guys so much for the opportunity.
So this is the 30,000-foot view. The piece of property that we're talking about this evening is outlined in blue on this image. It's along Avon Avenue, right next to the school, south of 36 and behind the, the Kokaleen Gas Station and, and future Brewster's Ice Cream. Okay, so here we are zoomed in again. The two properties outlined in blue with the existing homes on them are the ones that we're seeking the zoning amendment for. The lighter yellow square to the north is a piece of property that we filed a zoning amendment on early this year. That is the Family Promise Site Phase 1. So that, that bigger blue square that we just looked at is actually comprised of two properties. This is the first one to the north. This is the second one to the south. Here's a street view of the northernmost property and you can see how close this home is up to the road and existing driveway cut on Avon Avenue where you've got the residents backing out on Avon Avenue. This is the home to the south. Again, it's a duplex, but it's pretty close to the road, has two driveways. So again, residents backing out onto Avon Avenue. So this is the plan that we have right now for this piece of property. If we're successful in obtaining the zoning amendment to change the existing zoning from commercial to multifamily residential, it would allow us to continue the pattern of development that we started to the north. The phase one area is shown light on this image. The phase two area is shown a little bit darker. So again, we would continue townhomes fronting on Avon Avenue with parking lot in the rear and then an additional few units in the back corner. We've got to create a cul-de-sac, if you will, so that we have a way to, to bring emergency service vehicles into the site and back out. Now, here's what's interesting. Greg mentioned this earlier, that there was a meeting with the, the town, with Family Promise, with myself and with the school corporation. And you see the kind of odd-shaped piece of property just north of the school entry that's vacant on this. If successful in, in negotiating with the school and being able to obtain that piece of property for Family Promise, then I'm going to show you what the dream would be. The dream would be this, to continue the development, to add more attainable housing units on the site, create another entry into the development and, and make this a significant attainable housing community, improve the streetscape all along Avon Avenue, remove the drive cuts. As I said, this is, this is kind of the dream we hope we can get to. But if not, this is still a good solution, a good use and a good redevelopment of the property. Again, it removes the drive cuts on Avon Avenue and, and provides a nice, a, a nice development. So with that being said, we would ask for your support on the zoning amendment that we're seeking. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the project.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the minutes then, we'll show that ZA 24-12, Family Promise Phase 2 has been introduced. Next item on the agenda is to authorize litigation against WCCD regarding Dan Jones Phase 3.
Yeah, I'm going to take this one. As you guys are aware, the town has been working to widen Dan Jones Road and we ran into an issue on Dan Jones Phase 1 where West Central Conservancy District refused to relocate their utility facilities. As we have progressed on Dan Jones 3, we have ran into a similar situation. And so just as a reminder, Dan Jones 3 is from US 36 to County Road 100 North and West Central Conservancy District has an interceptor. And the communication that we've had from them is that they don't intend to relocate it. And if the town wants it relocated, that we can design and pay to relocate it. So we don't believe that's what the statute says. So we feel unfortunately that we have no other options at this time other than to pursue litigation. And so we are asking for the council to authorize that litigation tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize litigation against West Central Conservancy District regarding Dan Jones Phase 3.
Second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the final reading of ordinance 2024-55, the 2025 holiday schedule. Mr. Cannon?
Yes, this is the final reading. As you guys are aware, every year you have to approve the holiday schedule. And so this is our 2025 holiday schedule. It is the same, basically the same as what was approved last year, same number of holidays and everything. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Somebody like to make a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 2024-55, the 2025 holiday schedule as presented.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Next item is the final reading of ordinance 2024-56, 2024 Reappropriation Ordinance. Julie, are you going to do that?
Julie and I will kind of tag team it. So we know this kind of gets to you guys at the last minute, but Calvin and Julie are kind of literally today, that we're still moving money around. We're making sure that, you know, we still have claims that are still coming in and we have to make sure that we have money in the right account lines to pay them. So Julie and Calvin work up to the last minute and this is a difficult task. But basically they're moving money in between funds to make sure at the end of the year, Julie's not allowed to have any negatives in any of our funds. So we may, if we've overspent in some areas or we've underspent in others, we move the money basically to accommodate and make sure that we're compliant with state board of account guidelines and that our books are balanced and we don't have any negatives at the end of the year. So happy to answer your question.
What he actually meant was within the same fund, not between funds.
So the key here is, is that it shows a zero balance total on the like the 1101, zero. It means it's balanced.
Everything balances. Everything balances. You'll have no negative account lines.
Any other questions for Julie or for Ryan? Somebody like to make a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 2024-56, the 2024 Reappropriation Ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the final reading of ordinance 2024-57, Aviana Annexation. Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, just a reminder, you guys have kind of been through all the steps in the annexation process for this parcel, so this is the last step. The Aviana Annexation is, it's off of Ronald Reagan. It's actually the Target Shopping Center, and the Target Shopping Center swapped the property with the county when the county did Ronald Reagan. And so one parcel, just this little parcel, didn't get annexed. They are doing an expansion to that building, and so we asked that they annex that in when they came. And so this is the final step in the process for you guys to approve the annexation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-57 for the Aviana Annexation as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Next item is legal counsel report. Mr. Taylor. Merry Christmas. Next item on the agenda is public comment, the second of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Sean Stoops, chief of police. Just wanted to give a year-end thanks to all of the council, the clerk treasurer, Ryan Cannon, the legal team. All of you have done a fantastic job of supporting us and our mission and what we have to do. 2024 was pretty challenging with some vacancies that we've been trying to fill and retention issues and so forth. This year's budget was also challenging. This is the first time in a few years we had to really work to get it balanced, and I can't thank Ryan enough and Julie and Brian and everybody else that helped on our budget team, but specifically you, the council, all of you, because there are some contentious areas in that budget, and we're aware of that, but we really appreciate you believing in us and providing the tools that we need to go out there and try to recruit and retain individuals and get good candidates for our police department. Just as a side note, so far, since we've opened the process, we're up to about 240-some applicants online. So we're not getting too excited because we're really kind of shooting for 300, because we know we'll get about 20% to 22% actually show up on that cold January morning at 7:00 in the morning to run a mile and a half. So, and we are looking for volunteers, so if any of you want to come out there and help stand in the cold and watch, you're more than welcome. But the budget you did help us pass has improved our morale at the department. We've heard a lot of good conversations among the rank-and-file officers as well as our administrative staff, all of our other support staff. So I know you don't always hear it, but thank you. It's gone a long way, and we hope we can just keep our foot on the gas and keep this going through 2025, get some good people hired, fill those vacancies, and get out there and just keep working hard. So thank you, everybody, and from all the, everyone at the Avon Police Department, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. With nobody else coming forward, then, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move to council comments. Council, any comments?
I just want to congratulate the three officers that we have that just completed the law enforcement academy. I'm sure that they're excited about that and ready to get out there for their training, and we're all excited to get them on the roads and patrolling as well. Other than that, just Merry Christmas to everybody, and I hope everyone has a safe and happy time with their family.
I have a couple of things. One of them is, I think we've all gotten a number of responses via email regarding the Christmas gift cards that we have sent off to our employees. And as Sean said, we had some difficult things that we had to talk about with longevity pay and things of that nature and health benefits, and it did not go unrecognized. Everybody wanted to say thank you for that, and I think we're doing the right thing. As I say all the time, we have the best police department in the state of Indiana, and we want to keep it that way. So I applaud everybody for that as well. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And for those who are watching online, if you are interested in applying to be on one of our boards and commissions, to certainly do so, because we have a lot of opportunities here for people to get involved. Anybody else? Let's move on to council calendar. Mr. Cannon.
Yes. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Just a reminder, the town hall is closed for Christmas, so we won't be open. So if you need anything, we'll be back the 26th. Your next meeting is January 9th. I do want to remind you guys, you have at your desks, at least as of... Today, right, Suzanne?
Yes.
All candidates and applications that we have received. We're trying to give you guys as much time to review the boards and commissions and all of that information in advance. I'll also remind you, some of you I maybe haven't told yet, but I am off next week, and then I'm in Mexico the following week. So I'm actually out until the 6th. So Suzanne and I have been working diligently to get all this stuff ready for you guys because I won't be here, but thank you to Suzanne, who's going to spearhead it. You guys shouldn't miss a bead on anything you need to do. Suzanne's going to keep everything going, and most everything we've got ready. So just again, wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. And I want to repeat what Sean said. Thank you, guys, for all your support. It's been really nice seeing all the notes from the police department. I didn't want you guys to think my staff is ungrateful. They haven't got their gift cards yet. They're going to get them tomorrow. So a couple of people, Linda's not going to be here tomorrow, so Linda got hers, but thank you again for all your support this year. It's really appreciated. I think the town has come a long way over the last couple of years, and appreciate that and all your guys' leadership and helping move the town forward. And I think we've made great progress, and we're looking forward to a great 2025 as well. So thank you all.
There is one thing, since we're talking about these applications for boards and You know, when we're assigning people to these boards and commissions, there are some that have requirements with party affiliation, and most of these, everyone chose to not put their party affiliation. So I don't know how we go about assigning people to these boards and commissions without that information when it is a requirement for some of them.
Yeah, so we get that information from voter registration. So there's only a couple of boards that their voter actually applies, and if they've applied for that board, Suzanne, it should be on the applicant one. It should show their voter.
Yeah, I get reports from the voter registration department. A lot of them don't vote in the primary, therefore they're not required to tell you whether they're Republican or Democrat. So if they don't vote in the primary, then we don't know, unless they tell us, and they choose not, a lot of them choose not to answer that question on the application.
Can you tell us which boards and commissions' party affiliation matters? I mean, if it says...
It's on that list.
Okay, so if it says NA, it doesn't matter.
It's not, yeah.
So really, the only one that matters is the plan commission.